substance abuse, early pregnancy and criminal behavior. The problems, these problems can be compound themselves as a child becomes an adult. And whereas abuse and neglect are far more reaching than might be imagined, no socioeconomic group is immune. Children of all erases and ethnicities are victims of child abuse. And whereas during 2020, there were 535 substantiated cases of child abuse and neglect in Lynn County, and 16 Oregon children who died from causes related to familiar caregiver abuse or neglect. Thirteen of those children were five years or old or younger, and nine of those 13 were less than one year old. And whereas effective prevention programs succeed through partnerships of community groups that help support parents to provide safe and nurturing environment, child abuse isn't a total community problem affecting all levels of society, and the effects of child abuse need to be addressed by the entire community. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, hereby proclaim April 2022 as Child Prevention Month in Albany, Oregon, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to recognize and prevent child abuse. And in witness whereof, I here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 23rd day of March, 2022. Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor. Thank you. I would like to say something. I grew up and I was served in the United States Military. I grew up in a small town, just like Albany, out in the desert in Southern California. And my mother was in juvenile detention. She was also a police officer for 25 years. I responded in the car with her to, she was taking us to school or something. We rolled up on houses. You'd stop and a child was being killed or beaten by the parents. And one of the ones that I remember for the rest of my life, she got a call, she responded to this house, and this child was in a pot of boiling water on the stove. My mother drew her weapon and she went hunting. He didn't, she didn't, they had caught her and stopped her from hurting the person, but I remember that because I was standing in the kitchen door. I saw this child in this. Well, child abuse is real. Our police department and our agencies need to do our support to ensure that they can do their job to make it go away, or at least mitigate and reduce the numbers of events. So thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it. Next on the agenda is special presentations. We're honored to have Lynn County Sheriff's Office report from Sheriff Michelle Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
You lean forward a little. Can you put it?
There we go.
There you go.
All right. So basically, I think it's been a long time, or I don't know the last time that this has actually come to the City of Albany. But there are some services that Sheriff's Office, ships. And so I thought it was important to come. Guys, where we're at, what our status is. Myself, I was sworn in January 30th. I started my career in the City as a resident deputy in 1970. I then moved on to detectives specializing narcotics. Drug punishment was always a passion of mine because I saw what drugs, you know, presenting and talking about. I then got promoted to sergeant's position in our patrol division specializing in special teams with our mountain patrol deputies. I then moved on to lieutenant where I had multiple special teams as well as our field training program for me personally. That was actually one of my, the more important duties that I've done because I felt we were getting to a point where we were kind of forgetting where we came from as a sheriff's office. And it is really important to me that we treat everybody. I told all of our new deputies, we treat everybody like they're your mom, assuming your mom you really care about. And, you know, so if it was your mom calling, you're gonna, you're gonna take that call seriously, you're gonna show your compassion, you're gonna do everything you can to, you know, investigate that crime and hopefully make an arrest on that crime because that's what you would expect for your mom. And the other side of that is I tell them all that treat everybody like your mom was watching. Because if your mom wouldn't approve of the way you're talking to someone, or the way you're treating someone, then you probably shouldn't be doing it. I then became the patrol captain overseeing our 52 patrol deputies, then moved on to undersheriff, and now here I am as your next sheriff. I've always had a vision in our office to try and improve things, make it better. While I was in narcotics, I wrote, I wrote a interagency grant so we could use overtime dollars that we got from the grant for all of our agencies to work narcotics enforcement, specifically methamphetamine at the time. And then, you know, I was heavily involved, as some of you may remember, that we got a whole new computer system for both agencies, for our staff and I think Albany Police Department staff. That was, you know, we did, we basically made a 30-year leap in technology, which was very hard on people that were used to something that still had a black background with green, you know, type and lettering that was from 1990s. And so I worked really hard in, in, in training and implementing that system. So I was the incident commander on both the 2020 wildfires that we, we had during Labor Day, and also incident commander at the Willamette Country Music Festival. Both not necessarily something that you hope that happens because they were both chaotic, but they both taught me a lot about leadership and, and just how to manage something like that because it's probably not going to be the last disaster that we're gonna do. I'm married, I have two children, my daughter's about ready to be, my youngest is about ready to be 18 and go off to college. She wants to do law enforcement. I've, you know, especially in the last couple of years, the way law enforcement has been seen, it's been kind of a difficult, I have a lot of people saying, well, aren't you gonna discourage her because it's such a tough job? And I actually had to stop and think about it because obviously I love my daughter and care about what happens to her. But at the end of the day, we still need really good people that care about doing this job, doing this job. So I've done nothing but encourage her in that. I have two dogs, love my dogs too, almost as much as my children. And I reside in nearby Millersburg. Our mission statement at our office is keeping the peace with dignity, honesty, and compassion. Those are very important words. Actually, former Sheriff Bruce Riley came up with that. It's because it was simple, but it was also the way we do business. Keeping the peace, I think everybody understands, is when people commit crimes, you know, we, we try to make those people accountable and, and hopefully keep people from being victimized. Doing it with dignity is the way we conduct ourselves. We don't want our deputies to ever be that one on the roadside that's, you know, you know, kind of being chippy with the, the person that was speeding and, and being condescending and, you know, or treating somebody that we're, we have in custody, you know, like they're a quote unquote lowlife. I'm a big believer that the way we treat someone, and every new deputy gets a speech as well, it doesn't talk about their behavior, it actually talks about ours. Honesty, obviously, that's, that's kind of the bedrock of law enforcement. We're here to find the truth. And then compassion. We, as, as, you know, the mayor talked about his experience and stuff, we don't know what other people's experiences are, or maybe why they have the behavior that they have. And so we, you know, maybe dealing with somebody that has, they never call us on a good day. So we deal with them, you know, sometimes for the first time, and it's the most awful day in their work, in their life. Sometimes we're dealing with them for the hundredth time, and it's the hundredth worst day in their life. So, but we have to be compassionate about that and, and treat them so. And same goes for in our jail. We treat our, our adults in custody with compassion. There's been times where our deputies in the jail have actually encouraged and helped change, change lives by just being human and, and compassionate towards those people. Speaking of our jail, that's, that's kind of the biggest service that we provide to Albany. We normally, our complete jail bed is 231 beds. Because of the way we have to separate inmates, even prior to COVID, you were never going to see us at 231. We have to separate them out. Obviously, everybody knows, you know, male and female, we can't have in the same block. But we also have to separate them out, what we call high-risk offenders, or people that were more apt to be violent, with our medium-risk offenders, because, you know, the way I look at it, hopefully my son would never do this, but if my 22-year-old son committed a DUI and is serving a sentence in jail, I probably don't want with some, him in the same block with somebody who has attacked inmates, attacked staff, and is a violent person. So we have to do that separation. COVID has thrown a wrench in all of that. Right now, as of yesterday, we, our population was at 155. I know Chief Harden and I have had multiple conversations of why that is and what that looks like. But if you think about that initial separation, what COVID has done to us is now we have a COVID male and a COVID female, I can't put them in the same block with the other people, so we have to not use those beds. We couldn't for a long time do the double bunking that we were doing in the past. And so we, we had, over the last two years, our numbers have, have been much reduced from what we would like and what we normally have. I know that Albany police officers, my own deputies, when they are facing a victim, they want to be able to take that person away and take them to jail, even if it's for a minor offense, because that's what our, that's what our community expects. It hasn't always been possible over the last couple of years, but we're already making strides to where things are, hopefully, it's gonna take a while, because the other impact with COVID was our court system has been so incredibly backed up, because they weren't having a lot of court dates because of social distancing and, and all those things, they were doing them at the fairgrounds. So we normally, on average, probably have three or four homicide suspects. We now have 11 with probably a 12th coming to us. So the offenders that we have in there, because they're waiting so long for court dates, I have one gentleman in there that he's waited two and a half years for his court date. Now, some of that's been his own things, firing attorneys and things like that. But that's, that's what's happened with the impact of COVID, that people just aren't getting to court as fast. So our serious offenders, we're keeping them longer, which means we can't let them out, which means a less serious offender can't come in. So our average daily population this last year was 131. In a prior to COVID year, we were about 197. But again, I think we're, we're on the road to get into some semblance of normal even in the jail. Our civil division, they process all the subpoenas, small claims, divorce papers. They also do evictions. They take custody of children that are in situations that they shouldn't be. They do some seizures, concealed handgun license, they process around 15,000 plus a year. And they do employment fingerprinting, courthouse security for the circuit court, sex offender registration, and compensatory service, which is the court-ordered community service that people pick up. We also have support services division, probably the one that impacts, you know, your city the most, is our 911 center. We're one of the few counties that still have a 911 center rather than a regional center. There's some great benefits to that, that we have a little bit more, I guess, for lack of a better word, control over how they handle their calls. We get really frustrated sometimes when we take calls in from some of the regional centers that don't get the information that we need because they're doing so many different agencies. We also have records. They are the keeper of all of our records for reports, but they also process all the warrants for the circuit court. We also are the emergency manager of the entire county. So if there is a disaster, you guys have a city one, but it works, it works under the county emergency management. Then, I mean, they work together, but, but ultimately for the county, we oversee their emergency management part of it. And then search and rescue. Most of the time, that's up in the woods where people get lost, stuck, hurt, whatever that is. But there's been a couple of times that I know Chief Harden has called because you guys have had a kid that was missing. And we're, we're fine to call out all of our resources. Our search and rescue is unique because it's also a youth mentoring program. Most of our volunteers are kids between the ages of 14 and 21, along with our adult advisors. They are the ones that go out and they go trekking down the trail, they do a lot of the searches, they even do evidence searches for us when, you know, things are in the brush and things like that. They're a great, great group. Some unique things that we have is we are the agency in, in charge of a multi-agency SWAT team. So we're the, we're the primary agency on the SWAT team that Albany Police Department, Lebanon and Sweet Home are also a part of. We still have a dive team, we're one of the few counties that have that. The fire department has one as well, but we often get called on dive rescues or recoveries. We have a posse, which is for me kind of cool because I have a posse. And so, but they are a fantastic group of volunteers that bring their horses, they do parades, they do security at events. They also are heavily involved in our search and rescue because I can have somebody with a horse pack in, a Stokes gear or whatever else up in the wilderness a lot faster than, than somebody walking. And then we have marine and mountain patrol. A lot of people, you know, especially when you guys all graciously helped us pass our levy, they think, well, what is Albany getting out of that? And, you know, part of my answer, along with all the other divisions, is that I'm betting that you all leave Albany at some point. A lot of people go up to Foster, Green Peter, if anybody's ever hiked up at Blue, actually in Lynn County, probably one of the places that we get the most rescues. And those are the folks that do it. Our marine patrol keeps the lakes safe and monitor those. So speaking of the levy, our budget this year is $36 million annual budget. And it's to, to fund 192 positions in our office of all those different divisions I just talked about. We have, we get a small percent from the general fund, and then we get some in revenue, either through bed rentals from the jail, or CHL registration fees, those kinds of things. But the levy itself, that again, you guys thankfully passed in November, that is the majority of our funding. We have basically 127 on average of our positions that are funded by that levy. To not have a levy for us would mean a huge reduction in services in the jail. It would mean our patrol staff would be decimated, and we'd be cutting a lot of other services. Our spending, we try to be fiscally responsible, so 77% of our spending is on personnel, because in police work and law enforcement, it's a people business. I don't want to spend things if I don't need them, or spend on things if I don't need them, I want to spend on people to do the job. So vision for the future, a lot is working with partnerships. That's been an entirety of my career, all the way back to supervising mountain patrol, to working in detectives, working with DEA, FBI, Albany Police Department, Lebanon Police Department. I have a really great relationship with, at least I hope she says it is, with your chief, and with the other chiefs, Benton County Sheriff. And, you know, it's, again, it's those partnerships, because sometimes when, when there's a big event, we have the most detective resources, but most of the time, even our resources sometimes aren't enough. And so we will come in and help other agencies, they come in and help us. We have a major crimes team that all those agencies participate in, as well as an accident reconstruction team that we all participate in. I already talked about the SWAT team. There's some projects that, that Chief Harden and I have talked about, in particular on how it's gonna look. Mental health is one of my personal biggest concerns, that I think we need to figure out how to support mental health services. There's currently a project underway that we're trying to get off the ground called Yellow Line Project. And it's basically, what it is, is something that's, someone that's having a mental health episode, and let's say, for me, they're, they're trespassing at the Love's Truck Stop and causing a scene and won't leave. My alternatives right now are either jail, or if they're a danger to themselves or others, then they can go to the ER, medical hospital, and then mental health services may or may not be called, and it's a long drawn-out process. It's tying up my resources, and it's not really solving the problem. And so in this Yellow Line Project, they get a choice. Do you want to continue down the criminal justice path, or do you want to go to mental health services? They commit to about two or three-month program. If they commit to that program and complete it, then we don't pursue the, the criminal charges. And so, again, it's in the very baby steps. One of the big roadblocks right now, like everyone else, mental health is, is hurting for people. And, you know, for mental health workers that will come work for them. So that's one of, one of our projects that we've had multiple conversations between the different chiefs in Benton County and some other folks. For our office in particular, increased wellness program, I know Chief Harden and I have talked about this a lot because APD has a fantastic one. We're starting with baby steps with, starting with a peer support group, which we haven't had in a number of years. And it looks totally different than it did probably 20 years ago when, when we had it. We've already, we're in the selection process right now, and our employees are really excited to, to bring that on. Hiring and retention of quality people. Unlike some of our manufacturers, I've talked to some lumber companies, and, you know, again, everyone is hurting for employees and workers, and they've literally lowered kind of their standard of what they would accept as an employee, which is sometimes in a manufacturing plant, you can do that and give them a second chance program, and it's fantastic and it can work. I can't do that in law enforcement. And so we still want quality people. It's trying to hire them, and, you know, the employee wellness is part of the retention program. But we did a one-day hiring event where we did all the multiple steps. I'm sure, you know, most people know, it can be a long, rigorous process for law enforcement. Today's workforce, that doesn't tend to keep their attention anymore, and they want to move on to the next thing. So we did a one-day hiring process for our patrol corrections and dispatch positions. And just to give you an example of how successful it was, we had 21 applicants for patrol. The probably prior year, we were getting five or six a month. So, and they were actually quality applicants. It was just, it was getting their attention to, hey, I can go do this, this seems like fun, there, you know, we did lunch, our staff had a great time, and we are in the position that we haven't been in for a number of years, where we actually have a backlog of backgrounds with more backgrounds waiting than we have positions to fill. So that's a good, good place to be. I explain to our employees all the time, there's light at the end of the tunnel because they're all overworked. But the tunnel for law enforcement just happens to be a little bit longer than some other employers. So that's basically what I have for you guys. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, thank you, Sheriff.
Questions for the sheriff?
Please, Councilor Kaptan.
Yes, Sheriff, years ago, after the new jail got opened up, et cetera, one of the, one of the tours I took, it was mentioned that the drug costs that you folks had was in five figures. I'm wondering if that is still true and what that's evolved into?
Well, it's, it's funny you mention that because I was just going over her budget today and what we've spent so far. It is still in the five figures for simply mental health drugs that we're doing. So yeah, it's, healthcare is not cheap. And, but, you know, we have an obligation to, to take good care of the inmates and, and be mindful of their health and mental health, and we're having a lot more mental health issues because of COVID, because of the type of, of adult we have in custody there, seeing a lot more, and we have one mental health worker staff.
So make clarifying questions, so those are drugs for, for inmates?
Yes.
I was like, wait a minute now. Okay, thank you.
I'm not privy to the other ones.
Thank you. Counselors, Councilor Patholomie have anything?
Well, I, I have a lot of questions, but they're just...
They're running around?
Yeah, I was like, what? I've been... So, but I was just, I'm curious about talking about personal wellness. And that's something that you're guarding.
Yes. So we've always had, just like I think every employer out there has what's called an employee assistance program, EAP. And it's, you get 10 free visits a year or whatever else. That doesn't always, it's not always conducive to law enforcement problems. Police and even our correction staff, our dispatchers, they see, they hear things that the normal human being doesn't. You know, again, there are described some of those things that, they can be traumatic. And, you know, when I started, and it was funny, I just remembered this in the last few days, and when I started, I think it was the first or second year that, that I was a police officer, one of my first fatal crashes was a 15-year-old girl who took her aunt's car and wanted to go pick up her boyfriend, and then ended up running it straight into a neighbor's tree on a, on a curb outside of Syle. And, you know, it, I mean, it's a horrific scene, it's a mangled bloody mess. And then having to tell those parents that they just lost their 15-year-old daughter, I didn't really think about it as a probably 24, 25-year-old young deputy. But, you know, those kinds of things, and they get to people. And when you, it's not the only one. I can tell you, you know, 12 other things that I've done that probably would, would traumatize most people. And we have, again, a workforce today. Back then, you just thought, okay, you know, for lack of a better word, I'm gonna rub some dirt on it and go to the next call. And because that's how you handle things. And now we have, we have people, and again, I, I'm not meaning this in a bad way, they're more sensitive to how they feel about stuff, our younger workforce is, I think. I think our older workforce, it bothered, but they just weren't ever going to say anything about it. And so our younger deputies are more willing to express their feelings and talk about stuff. And we need to give them the resources, the proper resources to do that. And sometimes, you know, sometimes it's a person at our, at our agency, sometimes it's not. About a year ago, I comprised, I've talked to one of our, our expert psychiatrists that we send people if they're in an officer-involved shooting or something like that, that has some expertise in that, and got a list of mental health providers that they felt would be better for law enforcement, instead of just telling them to go through their regular doctor. So we've done that, we've now are, you know, because sometimes it'd be a divorce that they're going through that's bothering them. I don't want it to turn into something that's, you know, a bad situation or a career-ending situation because of their stress or, or trauma, or whatever else they're dealing with. So we're gonna have, across all of our disciplines, people that will be selected and properly trained, that they know they can go to and just talk about stuff if they want.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Patholomie. I have a question from Councilor Johnson online.
Yes, thank you, Sheriff Duncan. I think we're probably all interested in your mental health resources and your yellow, your Yellow Line Project. And I just wonder, is your office gonna be handling that? And is it kind of similar to what they do with the drug court program, where they go through, you know, like, they can advance and stuff, and if they make it to the program, then their charges will be dismissed? Is that kind of what you're going to do?
It's, it's actually a little step back from that. So instead of going through the system, and again, it's in the very beginning stages that we haven't actually started it yet, but we're, it actually came from, I believe it was Milwaukee, but don't quote me on that, that they had done this, and, and that project came to us, to the DA's office in particular. And, and so we've all been collaboratively working on what that would look like for Lynn County, or for Albany Police Department. But it's basically the officer or deputy would make a choice that, oh, I think this person would be a good candidate for the Yellow Line, or I don't, you know, if it's just somebody that's committing crimes, that's not gonna help. But if they think that it's a mental health issue, then they can make the choice that, hey, I'm gonna give them some paperwork to sign, and they can make their choice now prior to going into the system. And so prior to going to the DA's office, unlike drug court, which is after you get...
Yes.
And so the point is, is that if we can get them through treatment and not have a record, then maybe that's a better solution. So...
Yeah, no, I, I think it's a great idea, and I, I hope it works for you, I really do, because there's so, so many people out there that just need the help. And, you know, they, they're not actually criminals, they just need some help. So I think it's a great idea. So thank you for coming.
Sure. And I think sometimes it's too, it's a, it's a matter of they need the help, but they need to be walked to the door to get it.
Right. Councilor Novak, do you have anything? You're muted.
I, I, I'm only seeing a black screen, so that's, that's made it a little bit difficult. I've been trying to find Matt Harrington in my phone so I could text him and ask him what to do. Forgive me, yeah, no, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step away from the meeting and try to log back in and see if I can see anything on my screen.
Okay.
Besides, right now I have the sheriff's badge, and I haven't been able to see the face.
Okay, thank you, good sir. Thank you, Councilor. All right.
That's all I have, Councilor.
Thank you. Councilor Olson, you have any?
No, but I'm, hey, thanks for coming, pulling us in.
You bet.
Oh, just one comment, that I haven't heard numbers that high for homicide suspects since the 1980s, when the jail was still on top of the courthouse and was like 24 population.
Those aren't all homicides that are committed this year. And that's been our problem, is that it's been backed, a backed-up system for a number of years.
Yeah. Thank you for coming. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Sheriff. I really appreciate the Yellow Line Project concept. I have always been an advocate for de-stigmatizing mental health treatment or care for anyone. When I, when I grew up, police officers didn't go see anyone. It was nobody's business. My mother was one of them. So I do appreciate what you guys are doing, you and Chief Harner working together. And I'm hoping that it's a success. Whatever we can do to help, just let us know. I think that our police officers, our first responders, they need that. They need a place to go that's safe. They can, can de-stress. A good friend of mine, Dr. Edward Junkins, was a city councilor over in Corales, but he was also a surgeon. And he shared a term with me. It was called allostatic load. And it talked about how stress has long-term health effects, your physiological health effects. And we want to de-stress your law enforcement first responders as much as possible. So, well, thank you for what you're doing.
Bet.
I think that's it. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Next up, we have a virtual presentation by the Human Relations Commission and a report by Chair, you're still the chair, correct?
Yep, I still am.
Chair Stephanie Newton. You have the floor.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I will go ahead and share my screen. So I put together our report and I believe, I'm not sure, I sent it over to Kim. I had a few edits and I actually have a few updates I'll be adding in for public record. Really, the main highlights here, so we have a conclusion. Everyone, this will be at City Council for everyone to sign, current members of the HRC. The main highlights, I would say, would be for 2020 and 2021, after being on a brief hiatus, the update to our charter, and then coming together as, as a commission to develop key projects of what we want to do to, you know, live up to our mission, what we can do to make Albany a better place for everyone. Commissioner Soriano organized and put on a unity walk. And there's me another one this year. I put together a project where we did like some brief education at the farmer's market and that'll also be continued in this upcoming farmer's market every other Saturday with different topics. Something else I'm proud of is when there was the bias incident, members from the commission reached out to that victim's family and with an encouraging note and also an offer to provide resources. And then something else that was ridiculously fun was tabling the, at the Albany Pride with Albany Parks and Recreation. It was great to share a table with them. But yes, so I would love to answer any questions. But yeah, it's been a pleasure to, once again, chair this incredible commission. I'm thrilled to, that we've been, I feel like headed in the right direction and we're really making an impact and making Albany better for all.
Thank you, Stephanie. Counselors?
I want to thank you for your work. No questions?
Thank you.
Anybody got anything else? Well, I would like to thank you for the work that you're doing as well. And please keep us in, you know, if you want to have coffee, we need to catch up. But I do appreciate the entire commission's work and I look forward to talking with you in the future. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner, Chair. We have business from the public. Persons wanting to provide comments may submit written comments or register to speak at the website providing an agenda before noon on the date of the meeting and appear in person or appear in person at the meeting virtually or in person to register to speak on the signup sheet. We did have two people sign up. Ethel Ellingson did provide a letter to us regarding the porta potty. And Lisa Grotto signed up at the meeting to talk about Albany Downtown update. So I will turn the floor over to Mrs. Ellingson. So welcome to the Albany City Council meeting. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you. I get myself unmuted, so that's good. We're here tonight, coming, coming as a representative of the First Christian Church. We're wanting to renew our permit for the porta potty. That's on the premise of First Christian Church, also sponsored by the United Presbyterian Church. And I don't have in front of me, unfortunately, the letter that, that we received when we applied for the permit, but we are coming to the council. And the letter that we are submitting, I think all of you got a copy of that. And the code is somewhat ambiguous, I think, as far as directing the whoever okay's the permit. And so we would like to have some discussion about that and, and get on with the pursuing the permit and having it granted for our porta potty. So you have the letter in front of you. Do you want me to read it out loud?
No, we, I think we've all read the letter. Is that correct, Council? We've all read the letter. And so we are actually going, I moved up Agenda Item 10 to the next piece, which is the waste non-connection permit renewal process with Director Bailey. And so I'm going to have Director Bailey speak and then the council will have discussion. Is that okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So please forgive me. Yes, please. Next, we'll do this first and then go to Director Bailey, okay? Lisa Grotto from Downtown Association, our executive director. Well, thank you for coming and apologize for the slip.
I'll just make sure the mic's working. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. And so good to see all the city council, mostly in person and some virtually waving at your screens. I just wanted to give you a quick update. It's been such a long time since I've been able to be in front of you. Hopefully by this late in the month, many people have received a downtown newsletter. But some highlights are an update on the grant that we applied for on behalf of Ciberus and the Oregon Electric Railway Station project. A lot of people put in a lot of effort. We thank those of you who supported the letters that we received. It has been submitted and now it's the time to wait until May to find out whether we will be among the projects selected across the state. I'm just very excited to be part of that and hoping to bring that home. So, again, thank you to everyone who helped. Lots of hours were put in first in the selection process to pick the one project that we could put forth as the Albany Downtown Association and then to actually do the grant from there. Also wanted to mention that Albany Downtown participates in the Family Tree Relief Nursery Child Abuse Prevention Month diaper drive every April. You'll see boxes arriving in boxes around downtown as well as throughout the city. So please bring diapers and wipes, any sizes, any quantities, give often, whatever you can. We'll also be having an Easter egg hunt starting April 1st. This will be one where the kids get to wander around town, town with their parents and look at windows and fill out a little form for a chance to win a biscuit. Something that's been on the council's radar up and on for a long time, parking. I'd like to let you know that a number of the signs have been changed, including some of the one 10-minute zones have been eliminated in front of Wells Fargo. Yes, Mayor. We have managed that and you'll see other ones coming online. There were a total of 27 parking places that were rezoned to more appropriate times for the current businesses. We also resulted in five additional parking spaces where loading zones were identified as no. So many of these are shorter or longer lengths of time accommodate residents, our visitors, and employees. So I thought that might be of value to all of you. And we'll have another newsletter with more information coming up for you in April. The Riverfront Community Center grand opening tomorrow was highlighted on here, as well as we're so excited about the waterfront construction beginning this summer.
Thank you very much, Director.
Dick, Charleston?
Yes, you had some pictures of the waterfront. I have not been able to find similar pictures.
I found those on the city's website, on the CARA page. And Sophie Dykasp assisted me in those, so I'm sure that that team...
Maybe you could forward those.
I'd be happy.
I asked for plans. I got nine pages of old stuff. Stuff was good.
Of course, Councilor Olson. I'd be happy to send you...
Give me some kind of an indication of where...
Thank you, Director. Appreciate it. Thank you for your report.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. So thank you very much, both, Ms. Ellingson and, do you have a question?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could you ask Lisa where a person could drop off, like the wipes and the diapers and stuff? Because that is such a good program. And I just, I didn't hear where we could drop them off.
One of the locations will be the Albany Downtown Association office. There'll also be a list on our website, which is albnydowntown.com. We'll update that as soon as people sign up.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ellingson. Now we're going to go to Item 10, or from, Item 6, I moved from Item 10 on the agenda. And that is going to be Director Bailey's staff report for waste reconnection, non-connection permit renewal. Chris, Director Bailey, on Pages 40 and 55,55 in your report, your agenda.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So I'm going to be doing the talking on this item initially, but there are several people here who may have to speak up. So if you have questions, there are several of us involved. So in your packet, you have a memo that describes the current language in the Albany Municipal Code regarding the placement of portable toilets. The code allows the use of portable toilets for two reasons. First, for construction site activities, and those are generally authorized whenever a building permit is issued. And secondly, for temporary or short-term events, typically these are parks and rec events, there might be a charity walk, et cetera. We also allow portable toilets in the case of emergencies where, for instance, a residential sewer system might break or for some reason not be working and will allow portable toilets if the repair is going to take more than a few hours. In 2019, when this issue came before the council, the staff provided a memo, which is attached to your packet. And that memo contained research into municipal codes of several other cities in Oregon, and it also included a description of the waste non-connection permit. The permit option is described in the municipal code and it seemed like a way for the council to authorize staff to allow placement of a portable toilet outside of the two explicit uses that I just described. Based on that understanding, the council directed staff to issue the permit to First Christian Church, which we did. Since that time, additional research was done and the original resolution behind the waste non-connection permit was reviewed. The language in the resolution is clear that the permit was developed as a way to allow properties that need to connect to the city sewer, such as those that were on septic systems. But the property owner had a financial hardship or met the other conditions in the resolution, that property owner could request a waste non-connection permit and delay their connection to city sewer for up to a year. The resolution has no language about portable toilets. It was never intended to be a way to allow portable toilets to be used in the city. It was simply a way to give some time for people to, who address the financial hardship that comes with being required to connect to city sewers, which sometimes can be burdensome for people. So in short, that permit should not have been used to issue the church, to allow the church to have a portable toilet on their property. There are certainly times when portable toilets are appropriate and justified, but the use of a portable toilet as a semi-permanent restroom facility is not an allowable use under the municipal code. In other words, staff cannot approve the use of portable toilets in the city or issue a permit authorizing the use of a portable toilet, except in the limited cases that are described in the resolution that established the waste non-connection permit. The 2019 memo attached to your packet also had some conceptual ideas around modifying the municipal code language with respect to portable toilets. If the council wants to see some changes to the existing municipal code language, then we request that you provide that direction to us in a motion so that we understand what your council's wishes are and we can bring back proposed language for you to consider at a future meeting. With that, I'll conclude and be happy to take your questions.
Thank you much, Director. Councilor Olson's first up.
Are those prohibitions part of our charter ordinance resolute?
The, there's not a prohibition. It's, maybe Sean can answer the question. There are specific allowances that allow for the use of portable toilets. The non-connection permit was established by resolution. I don't think it was established by ordinance. Not sure if Sean can clarify.
Yeah, that was established by resolution 82.
To change that prohibition by resolution.
Right. If the council would like to describe ways for portable toilets to be used in the city that are, other than the two uses that are currently allowed, then we would have to bring back modifications to the municipal code that would describe that.
Has it been a problem to have an outhouse?
I don't have any data on the church itself, but it's really a bigger, bigger issue that we received another request for one of these permits at another business. And it's clear in the code that that is not the purpose of that permit. So if the council wants us to allow the use of portable toilets, we just need to know under what circumstances you want us to allow that. Portable toilets, as a general rule, are attractive nuisances. And the police department has quite a bit of data on less-than-desirable and often terrible things that happen around portable toilets. So added to the fact that they create the opportunity for spillage, waste, they often get kicked over or burned. It's not necessarily about this particular portable toilet, because any change to the code would apply throughout the entire city. And so we, we are asking for you to consider that. It's a global...
Been over this multiple times, well aware. I'm wondering about this particular...
I don't have any data. I'm not sure if the police chief has been able to gather any data on that. But we can, we can do some research and find out.
So I'm, would you mind if I asked Mrs. Ellingson about the...
Very good.
Please.
Okay, I can speak some to that. We have had, I don't know of any vandalism or any issues at a variety, around the toilet. We have, it's kept very clean. We have, it's cleaned weekly by the, by the company, but also we have three people at our church who clean it in between those times. I am frequently at the church and I don't see any, like I say, any evidence of vandalism. I don't think we've had any, well, Tim can probably answer that a little better than I can, at the church even more than I am. But what we do notice is that the, that our, the flower beds and things like that are clean. And those kind of, and I think around the whole area is cleaner. And I just, I really feel like, like we have probably one of the best toilets in town. That's...
All right.
Well, thank you very much for that. Pastor Graves, do you have anything?
I would just want to piggyback on what Ethel has shared. We don't seem to have a lot of difficulties. That's not to say that we haven't occasionally had to do some impromptu cleanings because something's happened, but we've dealt with that. There was one incident that I can recall, and I, it could have been two years ago, it could have been three years ago, where on a Saturday evening it did get knocked over. That was an isolated incident and, and it was dealt with. The police were involved and I was sorry that they had to take care of it, but they did. And I appreciated that. But, but it hasn't been, that hasn't been repeated.
Thank you.
I could answer any questions beyond that, but that's, that's certainly, my sense is that it is, it's, you know, we have to watch it, you know, we have to pay attention to it, but that's how you keep it clean.
Right. Thank you, Pastor. And I do want to wish you a happy birthday, by the way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilor Novak was first, then Councilor Johnson, then Councilor Kupczynski.
Thank you. I think this is a really important issue. And I have come to learn that the companies that maintain the toilets, they're the ones who take care of things if something is vandalized. As to bad things happening around portable toilets, I want... As to bad things happening around portable toilets, I want to submit to you, my friends, bad things happen everywhere. I'm not making light of, of what I've written or read, you know, about a horrible thing that happened to a young girl. I'm just saying, you know, as Ms. Ellingson has pointed out, um, at least the flower beds and the surrounding area is now clean of human waste. She didn't add that part, but I will. And as someone who's experienced human waste right outside the back door of my business, um, I can say that I, I think, uh, we need to seriously look at changing the, uh, the municipal code to allow for portable toilets in certain places. For one thing, I, for the life of me, can't understand how it's not okay for one of the drive-up coffee shops that opens at 5:00 in the morning, and the poor kid that's in there making the coffee for the, for the, um, individuals that drive up for it has no access to a bathroom until the market next door opens up at 8:00. I, I, and they used to have a toilet out there. I remember talking about this in the past. To me, that's a legitimate reason to have one of these, uh, portable toilets. Another one is in the case of U N D Nursery. That was brought to our attention. An older gentleman who owns this business, uh, had to remove the portable toilet on his property that he paid to have maintained, so it was nice. It didn't stink. It wasn't messed up. And, uh, he was told he couldn't have it on his own business property. He was an older gentleman who, it was a huge nursery. I hope it's still there. Um, at any rate, it helped him do his business, that he, you know, tend to his business by which he made his living, um, if he didn't have to hike all the way back to the main office or whatever when he was out doing his rounds. So, all this to say, my friends, there are legitimate reasons to have portable toilets, and I would say more of them, not less, and certainly on the grounds of the church where they, it's been nothing but a blessing to them, their congregants, and the people who need a bathroom in that area. I also want to say that I appreciate whoever it was on staff that published the list of public toilets and where they are. And I'm also going to say, with all due respect to our parks maintenance staff, because nothing against them at all, but, um, I used to play pickleball in Hackelman Park, and we had, the club, um, paid for two portable toilets, um, right by the public restrooms there, and the port, the portable toilets were infinitely cleaner and nicer to use than the, than the public toilets. And, and actually, sometimes, a lot of the times, those doors were locked, the, um, the, the public one. But I just want to say, I am in favor of amending the municipal code and making it so that we can make life better for everyone, that we can have for individuals who can't get to a certain building at a certain, you know, between such-and-such hour to be here, there, or somewhere else before they lock the door. I believe I saw a gentleman Monday night who was hoping to get into, uh, City Hall to use a bathroom, but the meeting had ended. As I was leaving, I saw that, and I think to myself, could we not just? I mean, the city's not, I, I don't know who pays for the maintenance, but in this case, I think the church is paying. I know in, in the cases of those businesses, they were paying. It's certainly not, and if you look at, even if the cities were to pay for some of these toilets, if you weigh that out against the cost of not having them, I, I don't view them as a nuisance at all, and I do know that they can be vandalized. But again, it was explained to me by one of the companies that they, they take care of that. That, that cost is not on the city, or even on the church, or whomever is making use of the portable toilet. So, to me, this is an easy answer to a difficult problem. And I sincerely hope my fellow council members and the mayor will give it a good, hard look, and let's please do something, um, with regard to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Novak. Uh, Counselor Johnson was next.
Yes, thank you. Um, this is one time when I wish counselors could talk to each other to see what the other, you know, what everyone's idea is. Um, I noticed that the initial resolution was passed back in 1982. Lots been, lots changed since 1982.
A little bit.
And even since we've, uh, you know, updated things. But I was looking over the, um, when restrooms are open to the public, there is nothing from 9:30 PM through 8:00 or 9:00 AM, nothing on weekends. And so, it was like, okay, are, are people supposed to? I mean, I don't know about you, but sometimes I get up in the middle of the night, you know? I mean, they're just, it's just infamous. I mean, I'm not, I wish this wasn't an issue. I really do. But my idea is, how about if, like, say, okay, say Counselor Novak, at her business, she's got problems. Well, and she doesn't want, you know, to clean up the mess all the time, that she or any other business who has problems, go ahead and apply for a permit to have one. They take care of the maintenance, I mean, not the maintenance, but they take, take care of the, uh, cost for having it there, just like the church is doing. And it, it's not like it's going to be a porta potty on every 100 feet or something. It's just going to be like where it's needed, and I'm sure that some businesses would appreciate not having to clean up all the time. And so, I'm just wondering if there is something, some way that we can work this out. Um, I mean, I, I had asked, actually, I had asked, um, Chief Harden, the city manager, and the, I can't remember what Mary's title is now, but anyway, what, what have been the, uh, police responses to it? Or what's been the problem with the first, that the church's, uh, porta potty? Can anybody tell me?
Counselor Johnson, I don't, sorry, um, I don't think that the police chief has had the time to do the research on the calls in that neighborhood today.
Okay.
But they can look into that, I think.
Yeah, I think that's very important, because, I mean, if there's been one in one or two years, that doesn't seem like a problem to me. And any business that would like one and needs one, um, they're going to take care of it because they have people coming to their businesses, and they don't want a mess. So, I mean, I'm just throwing out some ideas, and like I said, I wish this was a time when counselors could get together and, you know, brainstorm. Because I don't know how others feel, and I know I'm only one vote, but I want to hear what other people's ideas are, and, and if they just want to, uh, let this go and take it away from the church, and, oh, by the way, if there's a mess, somebody can clean it up. So, um, it's, I think, I think it's doable, but I don't know. It's just my feelings, so.
Thank you, Counselor.
I want to hear, yeah, I want to hear from other counselors. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, I think what we're looking for, and I'm going to let other councils have their opportunity, is direction, correct?
Yes, Mayor. Um, if you're happy with the code the way it is now, then we'll leave it. If not, we'd like some guidance.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm going to have the other councils express their, so Counselor Kupczynski, Counselor Olson, then we'll.
I'll defer to the city manager, and then I'll make a comment.
City manager, I didn't see you. I'm sorry. I'm watching the screen, too.
No, that's all right. Thank you, Counselor Kupczynski. I was just going to say that, uh, our code compliance officer and chief of police started looking into that when they asked us. We'll be able to have more information for you.
Okay, I know it was last minute, but I, I just had time to read the agenda this morning, so thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And the Counselor Kupczynski.
Okay, I had, uh, basically just a couple of questions, seemingly, right now, maybe one of them can't be answered on the, the report that we got. Uh, I think it was page 43, talks about the number of incidents around the church, and it ends up in August of 2019. Uh, have there been any incidents, uh, since then? Um, apparently, that isn't available right now to find out. But anecdotally, I get my haircut right across the street from the church at Jen Walker's, uh, Walker's Barber Shop. And after the, uh, porta potty was put in, she'd had several instances of defecation outside her building. She said she hasn't had any problems since then. Uh, she was all in favor of having the porta potty. Um, that's the only one anecdote I can put my finger on it with a porta potty per se, because it's the only one we have in town. Uh, but based on that, unless there's something, uh, egregious happening, uh, with that porta potty in that area that can be pinpointed to that porta potty, I have no qualms in, uh, concurring with, uh, Counselor Novak and, uh, Counselor Johnson on allowing more of them simply because of the reasons already stated. They're paid for by the private business. There's no maintenance cost to the city. There's nothing that the city has to do involved with them, other than the fact that I get that some people probably don't like the look of a porta, porta potty. Uh, be that as it may, uh, they're almost ubiquitous, especially at the sites already mentioned. But to what, um, was already mentioned, you go down the list of what public places we have that are available on that master list, uh, when you gotta go, you gotta go, and there's basically nothing during nighttime that you can go. So, something's going to happen. They're going to go someplace, period. So, I would say, you know, give them more of an opportunity to do it correctly.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Olson.
Historical note, back in the 70s, uh, met in, uh, sometimes called the Old City Hall. It originally was the, uh, post office. And you'll notice there's a block, uh, a building behind that, uh, historic building. And that was a public restroom back in the day. And when I was in council, it was, um, many of our meetings were long enough to take a break. Ten, thirty years. And I, I'd go down there and check it out, times used. And, uh, I think it was open 24 hours a day. And, uh, and I think it served a wonderful then, and, uh, days. Uh, I want, I want to say, uh, I want, I echo Ray's statement, far better to, uh, use a porta potty like the barber shop's doorway. I, I can see where that's, uh, a real, um, uh, I don't know what the term is, uh, something that would anger the businessperson to find that in the morning when they come to open their business. So, uh, um, being a sort of an iconoclast, I'm tempted to say, why don't we just break the rules and have a few porta potties around? But I think it'd be better to, uh, if we can modify our ordinance or, or resolution, or whatever it is, and see if we can't have some provisions where it can be available. And, um, if there are problems, they can, the, uh, permission can be removed. But I'm in favor of this particular, uh, uh, request.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. So, Counselor Smith? Do you have anything? Oh, go ahead.
So, I am concurring with most of those statements that have been made by other counselors. And I know that I have, um, participated, um, in the code project's outreach efforts and, um, been to many areas of the city that have had various types of restrooms. And the porta potties are, sometimes they're there, there's a locked restroom that's normally there, but then the porta potty, and that's been kept well, preserved. And then there's other areas where there's, they're not kept well, and those are managed by the city. But the experiences I've had are from previous. I also have an anecdotal story of the Dave Cart Path, um, from a resident who lives along there of how before the porta potty from, at the church, was more pieces there than there is now. So, I really appreciate that, uh, we have this opportunity and concur to, uh, have a resolution to move forward with appropriate languaging in our code to be able to have more within the city, properly managed by the people who are promoting those, uh, porta potties. I think private businesses will do a, an adequate job as the church has done.
End it.
That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Whitlamue. And Counselor Smith, finally.
Thank you. Um, uh, for the record, in case anybody's wondering, uh, I am the Mary Smith who wrote the memo in 2019. I was on the staff at the, and I did the research. I was not aware of the resolution from 1982, which, um, firms up the research that was done at the time. As the municipal code states, um, you, we require plumbing fixtures to be connected to a public sewer when available. Public sewers are available at the church. They're available at local businesses. They're available at homes. Um, Albany is the 11th largest city in the, in the state. We, it's not the Wild West any longer. We don't need porta potties, you know, popping up everywhere. Um, and I understand, I understand that they're convenient and that they're sometimes needed. But if something is a permanent business or a permanent institution with a permanent, um, need to provide sanitation for invited guests or casual visitors, they should have, uh, access to permanent plumbing fixtures attached to the city sewer. That's the way I feel. Um, I understand the, the coffee kiosk, um, problem. Um, the, the Spirit Espresso is one of my constituents and one of my neighbors. And, um, I, I understand that that is an issue. It's, it's most awkward when you're providing sanitation for your employees only, and you've got a three-hour window, um, of inconvenience. That, uh, excuse me, but that should be part of a business plan when, when you set up a business that is not standard, not connected to things dependent on extension cords and so on. It should be part of your plan. And I think maybe people don't think of that. You always miss something. Everybody's got a checklist with a hole in it. And so, that, I, I get that. I'm, I'm sympathetic. Um, I'm sympathetic in this instance, too. But, um, serving the population that uses the public, the porta potty is part of the church's, uh, permanent mission. And it's part of being permanently compassionate and caring. And there are toilets in that building. And I don't, I just, I can't, I can't go along with, I know I'm losing this one. I just have to say it. I don't want Albany full of porta potties, when we don't have to do that. Um, I, I'd like, um, Director Bailey, if you can give us an update on the public restroom that's being built on government time at the train station.
Sure. And this is another, uh, uh, thing that came out of this discussion in 2019 about the availability of public restrooms downtown. And one of the solutions was to look into the city providing a facility, and really, the, the closest place we could identify with, with room was the train station. And so, we did work with the state. We have a federal grant through the Federal Transit Administration to build a public restroom facility at the train station, which is not downtown Albany, but our options in downtown Albany were a little bit limited. That project is, um, in final design, and I think we're to the point of selecting the, um, it's actually going to be like a prefab-type building, pretty simple construction. And so, I think we're almost to the point of identifying that. And, um, we also have to go to the Landmarks Commission because the train station is a historic property. And so, talk about ways to make this building blend with the existing architecture. But the goal is, I think, to have that, um, facility built this summer or fall. And so, it's moving along at the typical federal government pace. Um, I, if I could ask a question, it, it seems like, um, we will be coming back with suggested, uh, updates to the code. And, um, one clarifying question that has occurred to me is, um, most of the comments from the council have seemed to be about porta potties that are open to the public, not porta potties for the use of the business, um, per se. So, some of the espresso stands, coffee stands in particular, were not designed and constructed to have their own restroom facility. And similar to how we manage parking requirements, a lot of them have restroom agreements with nearby businesses. Like, a lot of businesses have parking agreements with nearby businesses. Um, the ones that had porta potties were not for the public. They were only for employees. And so, um, I guess my question and my comment would be, I do not think that we, as the city that owns the municipal sewer, should be giving a, providing a way for businesses to opt out of the development. to opt out of the development code requirement for them to provide adequate restroom facilities for their business. So that if we structure these changes, my suggestion would be, it seems like the council's intent is to have these somewhat available to the public at large, not designed to serve businesses specifically. And I'd like a little clarification on that so that we can structure the language appropriately.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Councillor Novak, please be brief so we can get on to the discussion. Thank you.
Yes, I had asked for both. I spoke on behalf of businesses, and I also spoke on behalf of situations like the church, which is ministering to these people by providing that toilet. And I think we need both, and I don't think the city needs to fear people skirting the development issues, or, I'm sorry, I lost the second half of the thought, I'm not 100% today, but I just, I spoke on behalf of both situations. You don't have to fear the other half of the thought was porta potties on every corner. No, absolutely not. Give me a break. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Olson, and then we'll go back to the director. Actually, we've got two more over here.
Can you remind me when we started this discussion about a public facility at the railroad station? Is it two years, three years?
It was twenty.
It was 2019 when this larger discussion about public restrooms was.
So it's been a while.
It has.
And I would guess, if we're gonna say to churches, if you want to serve the public, it may take two, four years. Another question is, can you give me an idea how much it's costing to build that plumbed-in, housed, public facility? Millions?
I can, oh, no, not millions. I think it's in the six figures. I don't know if Stacy has the number. No, but we'll get that and get it back to you.
Well, I just want to point out that, say, I want to start, thank God, I don't, I'm not tall, say, I wanted to start a business to sell widgets to the public, and if I'm required to have a restroom that's in good enough shape to serve the public, I think that's something different than if I have a little hubby hole over here where I can use it. Is that the case, Mr. Building Inspector? Are there different requirements if I'm gonna serve the public with a restroom rather than just my own personal needs once a day or so?
I think he's talking to the, yeah, the building inspector.
Okay, well, I see perhaps a response.
Sure, there certainly is different requirements for if you have a restroom that's open to the public, basically, sorry, anytime you have a restroom that's gonna be open to the public or the public is going to be able to enter, you know, different than if you were to build a restroom in a private home that the public's not gonna be going into has different requirements than if you were to have a restroom in business itself.
So my point is, if I'm required to do that, I probably will decide not to sell widgets. Yeah, give up on that. And I wonder how many other businesses? I know there are several businesses that are really having trouble meeting the city's codes, and I don't know if they've been stifled to where they don't do it, but I know I've heard several complaints, the requirements are too difficult, too expensive to apply with. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you, Director. Okay, so what does councillor, oh, councillor Thompson, he was next.
Yes, this is just a question, kind of as a semi rebuttal to Director Bailey's most recent comments. I can't fathom going into a restaurant that has a public restroom as part of that business and say, no, I'm not gonna use that one, I want to walk outside and use a porta potty. Help me understand that.
Sure, that wasn't my intention. I think what I'm referring to is that when a business comes in and applies for its permits and development, goes through development review, it has requirements under the building code and the development code, as councillor Olson was talking about, for the number and type of restrooms that have to be included. Some small businesses, like these coffee stands, have reached agreements with other businesses rather than building their own restroom, and then later brought in a porta potty. And that is essentially getting around the code. The other thing I would add, and this is probably not gonna be a popular opinion, but this is my job, so I'll go ahead and say it, is the city has built a really nice sanitary sewer system, and part of the anticipation of having a sanitary sewer system is that we will define when and how you are required to connect. And in the municipal code currently, if there is a sanitary sewer in front of your, within 300 feet of your property, you're required to connect. And that's for the good of the community, because it takes all of us to support this infrastructure, because it's very expensive, as you all well know, to maintain and continue with working with this infrastructure. I'm not suggesting people are gonna plunk porta potties down in order to get out of connecting to a sewer, but it is the responsibility of the people who are working and living in the city to follow the code and connect appropriately. So when we're offering these options for people to say, well, I would like to provide bathroom facilities, but for whatever reason, I'm not going to invest in the bathroom facility myself, I'm going to rent this temporary bathroom facility. In my opinion, which is only my opinion, as the person who's responsible for the sewer system, I don't think we should be doing that a lot. I think there should be strict boundaries on when we do that, because we want people to use our sanitary sewer system. It is more healthy, it's better for the community. So I'll just leave my comments at that. I'm sure many people will not agree with me, but that's, you know, my job is to support and make the sanitary sewer system work for the community, and I think this is part of it.
So councillor Novak, be brief, because we have a few more people like to speak as well on this topic.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just wanted to remind councillor Bailey and anyone else who's listening that there, I'm talking about also extenuating circumstances. In the case of U and D Nursery, they're a business, they're connected to the sewer system, they have toilets, but they also have a very large site, and they had asked permission to put and paid for this thing on their own property because it's a large property. Are you saying the city can't see their way clear to add a modification? I'm hoping, let me just rephrase that, I'm hoping we can add a modification, at least in the case of a business like that where they have a sewer, they're paying their sewer costs every single month, but they need an additional something because their site is large and they don't, it's an older gentleman and his older wife, and they're, I mean, we need to at least consider, people will have to go out of business, they have to shut their shop down because they can't, they can't walk 800,000 yards like they used to when they were younger. I'm talking about an allowance in the code that's fair and right.
So councillor Novak and the rest of the councillors, that's what she's asking for is direction. So if we can give direction to staff to go back and say, what are the situations that this makes sense, we have to ask for that, and they'll give it to us. So continuing on beating up Director Bailey is inefficient use of time.
It's fine.
But I would like to know what the council would like to do. Councillor Smith, go ahead, and then we'll go back to Director Bailey.
And that's where I was going, was to offer some draft language. It's in the packet from, with the memo from 2019. It's, the code is, the code language that's in there is based on a community in Washington State. I couldn't find any in Oregon that had language that applied, but this provides some parameters for setting up portable toilets, screening, fencing, setbacks, door orientation, the whole thing. So that would be a place to start, to look.
Okay, so I'm asking the staff, I'm asking, are we giving them direction to go back and bring us back something we can look at considering for businesses and also for public bathrooms? That we're asking? That we're asking?
Yes.
I get thumbs up? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Can I say one last thing?
Go ahead.
I agree with you 100%. But I'm concerned about our society. And if we get to the point where we're progressive enough and compassionate in our society, that everybody has a place where they can sleep with a roof over their, and can have a facility, yes, it should be connected to our sewer.
I agree.
But how, what's the percentage of people that reside, I don't know what you call, I guess they live here, how many of them are sleeping in tents, homeless, no one wants to be? Do I have any idea?
I do have an idea.
What's the percentage?
Well, I was gonna ask you, you participated in Last Count, right?
Right. Unofficial, they haven't got the official title, the totals yet, but our unofficial total was 94 unsheltered, which means people in cars or camping.
That is wrong.
Wow, 94 people in Albany.
Yes.
94 individuals in Albany. That, of course, is an undercount.
I think we're doing a lot better than many others.
Councillor Novak?
Yes, question for councillor Bartholomew, that doesn't include the people who are currently sheltering in places like Helping Hands and Second Chance and all that stuff?
Well, they have access to a.
That is, that is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. And may I also, forgive me, since I have asked that question, Director Bailey, I was in no way meaning to attack you, okay? My voice raises when I feel strongly about something, all right? This is nothing personal against anyone at all.
I understand.
But I just, I hope you understand that, I hope you know I love you, because I do, all of you, staff, everybody, councillors, I love you all, I just feel really strongly about this. And, you know, in those situations, like, the church has plumbing, too, they pay for their, they have their bathrooms, they're paying their sewer fee, they're just asking to put this on their property, not connected to, I don't think they're trying to skirt anything or cheat, I think they're just, I think that it should, there are times, and there should be places, where a business can have both, or whatever, you know? I mean, can they have their own plumbed sewer for their church and be a gracious, kind provider to those without a roof over their heads, without having everybody file through the church? I think it's a lovely compromise, I think it's a lovely way to do things.
Thank you, councillor Novak. Thank you, councillor Novak. I received a request that we speak into the microphone, and I'm the number one offender, so I do apologize for that.
Hey, that's.
Well, you too, so you're the other one. So, yeah, you can explain as well.
I'll talk louder.
So thank you, Director Bailey, we would appreciate some, if you can bring something back to us.
We will.
Thank you. Next, award.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, what can we do for the church tonight? While we're mulling all of this over, it's not gonna happen overnight, and I just, I mean, I have no problem with extending it for another year, and then we can mull it over and figure it out.
I haven't heard a motion.
I would move that we extend the church's, oh, request to leave the porta potty where it is for the next year, and then we will ask staff to come back with recommendations. Seconded.
Oh, seconded.
I have a motion in a second. I'm guessing all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, I believe it was six to nothing, so thank you.
No.
No?
I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna ask for no votes.
I'm sorry, is there, all those opposed say no?
No.
So motion passes five to one.
To the door.
So thank you very much.
And, uh, Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, I would like to say thank you for all your consideration, and we'll hope this gets resolved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Next is award of bids, and thank you councillor Johnson for bringing that back up. Award of bids, asphalt surface treatment programs, ST 22-02, by Andrew Monaco, page 21 through 24.
On February 15th, 2022, we opened five bids for project ST 2202, 2022 Asphalt Surface Treatment Program. Low bidder was Blackline Incorporated of Vancouver, Washington. The scope of this project includes placement of slurry seals on local streets in three different neighborhoods. Slurry seals are a thin surface treatment that seals small cracks, restores the pavement surface, is most effective and applied to residential streets that are in fairly good condition. Staff recommends to cancel award of contract, the amount of $298,160 to Blackline Incorporated in Vancouver, Washington, for construction of the slurry seals for the asphalt surface treatment.
Thank you very much, council. Anything?
Yes, I'm very impressed on the bidding coming in so much lower than the actual budget estimate, which is a segue, because I just had our Albany Area Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting this afternoon, and the representative from ODOT said that several contracts, possibly one here in the Albany area, the repaving of Spring Hill Drive, a contract is going to be set back potentially because of the rising costs for fuel and oil as part of that process. And he said that any company or any organization that is having bids coming in at or near their original estimate is doing very, very well, so kudos to you for having that done.
Yeah, we were expecting asphalt prices to rise, but this substance is, so we were surprised at how bids were, but part of that is just getting the season.
Thank you.
So is there, so my question to you, is there gonna be tendencies with this? Like, say if a person says, well, our costs have gone up, are they gonna bring it back to us and say, we'd like more money?
So this one does not have, do not have an escalation clause in this contract, so they're entering, if they enter into contract with.
This is what it is.
They're locking in their price.
Thank you. Any other councillor have anything?
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering, are we on, are we on agenda item six or seven?
We're on seven, we finished six earlier. I moved ten, I moved ten to six. Six was, the original six was removed via the email this afternoon, and.
Okay, I didn't get, I didn't get the email, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just make a comment on this one, that I was really surprised of the bids that came from out of state.
Yeah, Sacramento, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if these, I don't know if these people are hungry, or if they're the only ones that can, you know, like, do this job, but yeah, it's very, very assuring, I think, that things are maybe coming around now, so thank you for the explanation.
Thank you very much. So councillor, what would you like to do with this?
I would make a motion to award the contract as presented, with the comment that I love slurry seal, and I'm sorry that my neighborhood is too old to qualify for it anymore. Neither my streets nor myself would benefit from surface treatment any longer.
I want to know, we have a cup of coffee, why do you like slurry seal?
I like it because it saves the street for a lot longer.
That's all I need to know, I'm worried about something.
It's messy, it's messy, but it's, but it works.
I'll second the motion without the extraneous comments.
Okay, motion, motion in a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Is the material recycled tire rubber by any chance, or is it all fresh rubber, tree rubber?
So for slurry seal, I believe it's all the fresh latex, fresh asphalt.
Oh, well, that's too bad, I was hoping there was some way to recycle all the dead tires that are kicking around.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion, a second, and a vote, and all those in favor say aye, I think we had those done. Those opposed say no? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda item is arts traffic signal enhancement program and periwinkle path improvements, ST 20-03, and who's gonna be bringing that to us? That is Chris Circluski, circluski, on page 25 through 29, your project packet, your agenda packet.
Thank you, let me make sure you can hear me.
Thank you, let me make sure you can hear me here.
A little, a little closer.
I guess I just need to lean closer, so I will do, I'll do so. So, uh, yes, following, uh, the previous, uh, a little bit of a change-up here, uh, staff is recommending that council reject all bids for ST twenty, zero-three, All Roads Transportation, uh, Traffic Signal Enhancement and Periwinkle Path Improvement Project. Uh, February twenty-second, we opened bids, uh, for this project, uh, the engineer's estimate was five-hundred-and-twenty thousand, uh, we got three bids ranging from eight-hundred-and-fourteen, four-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars, to just over nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollars. This project is a combination of two separate grant projects that, uh, received at different times, but it turned out that their scopes overlapped at, at one intersection, so it made sense to combine them together, so we weren't redoing or undoing work from one project to the other, we're having two contractors trying to work in the same space. Uh, the Schedule A part of the project is the arts portion, which, uh, the scope of that includes, uh, safety improvements to four intersections around Albany, uh, which would add flashing left turn arrows, uh, pedestrian buttons, uh, and curb ramps, among other things. Uh, that portion of the project was three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars over the budget. Uh, the budget for that is from a grant from ODOT, uh, that was scoped about five years ago, uh, and ODOT came up with the cost estimate for that as part of the grant process, and in the past couple of months, we've just had, turns out, cost for traffic signal-related work has gone up way more than everything else, and everything else has gone up by a lot, so, uh, that was an unexpected surprise there. Uh, the Schedule B portion is a Safe Frost to School Grant, uh, that would widen the sidewalk along, uh, the north side of Queen Avenue from the intersection of Queen and Geary, west across, uh, Periwinkle Creek and connect to the Periwinkle Creek Bike Path, uh, to kind of make a better connection between the path and from, you know, through that intersection. Uh, that portion of the project came in within budget, uh, but unfortunately, they were bid together, and, uh, at this point, there's no way to separate them the way the plans were put together. So, uh, staff is recommending that we reject all the bids, and, uh, council direct staff to rebid the two projects as separate projects. Uh, the arts portion, uh, we're already in the process of working with ODOT to try to get additional grant funding for that, uh, we're expecting that there could be, uh, money with the same program becoming available as part of the federal infrastructure bill that passed, uh, in the last year, but we're waiting for the specifics on that. Uh, the Safe Frost to School section is, since that was on budget with some minor changes, we can put that out to bid here in the next, uh, several weeks, and, uh, hopefully bring that back to award that section quicker.
Good.
So, if I have any questions, I can answer
Any questions, counsel?
So, is he gonna come back with better bids, or just?
So, he wants direction, he wants us to reject this one?
Yeah, I understand that, but I can't under, you know, is he gonna come back with another plan, is that, that was, I couldn't understand where, I think you're not talking
I'll, I'll try.
Close enough to the microphone like I don't usually do.
Yeah, so, uh, what we wanna do is come back, uh, and rebid both projects, uh, the, the arts portion of the project, uh, we'll have to work more with ODOT on the funding, uh, so that might take longer to work out. Uh, Schedule B, the Safe Frost to School Program, we think we can complete that within budget, uh, if we go out to bid soon.
Thank you.
Counselor? You have a motion?
Yes, I would move that, um, the council reject all bids received in response to the invitation to bid advertised for All Roads Transportation Safety, uh, ARTS, Traffic Signal Enhancement and Periwinkle Path Improvement Project.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes. Now, is there anything else? Would you like to give him direction to come back with a second set of bids? So, a council would like you to come back with, uh, the bid separate next time, uh, we'd love to hear from you.
All right, we will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number, item eight, it will be approval of the, of agreement, cooperative procurement for purchase of a screener, Craig Prosser?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors.
Good evening.
The new compost facility project is nearing completion, and one of the remaining components needed in the compost is the compost screening machine. This machine will screen out larger pieces of bulking material for reuse as amendment material, and reduce the size of the final, uh, product prior to distribution. Originally, while planning the compost project, city staff planned to rent different machines to try out and see which one would be a better fit for the operation, but with the COVID pandemic, over the last two years, supply chain issues and lead times became a real problem. Manufacturer availability was unpredictable, delivery of any machine ranged from nine to eighteen months, with no guarantee to have a rental machine on site when needed. For these reasons, renting was not a viable option. Uh, when researching leasing the equipment, costs ran between ten and sixteen thousand dollars a month, depending on manufacturer and machine availability. It quickly became apparent that it was not fiscally responsible to lease the equipment. At that cost, after a standard three-year lease agreement, we would have more than paid for the equipment, the machine outright, but then would still need to purchase a unit after the lease period was over. It's kind of like leasing your car. City staff conducted market research and found competitive requests for proposals were conducted by Houston Galveston Area Council, HGAC, and Sourcewell. The city of Albany is a member of both municipal cooperative purchasing, uh, programs. HGAC awarded Ecoverse an approved vendor contract SM ten dash twenty, effective October twenty-twenty through September twenty-twenty-three. Research found HGAC provided better pricing and support on the screener than Sourcewell did. The decision was made to go with the low bid and to purchase the machine instead of leasing, uh, so three quotes were obtained for due diligence. This purchase includes one Dopstat SM six seventeen dash two screener, three days of onsite training, a two-year, two-thousand-hour express warranty with service intervals, uh, by qualified PacWest maintenance technicians. Now, PacWest, they're in Eugene and Portland, they're authorized dealers of the Ecoverse products, and will handle all parts, service, and support. The Dopstat SM six seventeen point two also comes with a telematic monitoring system, which gives a factory tech remote access to control panel, saving potentially costly service calls. Additionally, there is a Dopstat parts supply warehouse in Reno, Nevada. The total cost of this contract is three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars and seven-hundred-and-seven dollars. The expected service life for this machine is twenty-five years or more. The sewer capital fund will be the source of funding for the screener. Staff recommends that city council approve by resolution an exemption from competitive bidding requirements, and authorize Public Works Director Bailey to enter a contract to purchase one Dopstat compost screener from Ecoverse using the existing Interstate Cooperative Purchasing Program through HGAC. Dopstat screener supports our new composting project now and for future growth. With that, uh, thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, and/or I wanted to make sure the council was aware of this, we are available for tours, um, for the council to come on out and take a look at the facility. Um, we're probably looking at, um, first of April, say the fourth, that first Monday through the fifteenth, so, if you guys would like, uh, either through Director Bailey or myself, we can set up a tour for you.
Thank you very much. So, counsel, any questions for Mr. Prosser?
I'm gonna make them up.
Oh, perfect, go for it.
Um, I move we approve a resolution of the Albany City Council, acting as local contract review board, proving exemption from competitive bidding requirements through a contract with the Houston Galveston Area Council and Ecoverse Industries, and authorizing the Public Works Director to enter into a contract with Ecoverse Industries to purchase a Dopstat six seventeen point two Tormal screener.
You have a, you have a second?
Second.
You have a second, okay, thank you. Any discussion further? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Counselor Novak? You're remuted.
Sorry, I said aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, those opposed say no? Hearing none, motion passes, resolution passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, next up is our Chief of Police, uh, Police Vehicle Agreement, Agreement, Leasing and Maintenance, Chief Harden, page thirty-three and thirty-four of your packet.
Good evening, Mayor and council, I'll stand as quick, uh, maybe I need a little stepstool here. Matt, can you make a shorter podium next time? Okay, thanks. Um, I'll keep this brief, because, uh, I know it's running late. Uh, staff request council adopt the attached resolution accepting the proposal and rewarding a contract for police vehicle lease, purchase, outfit, and equipment maintenance to Wireworks LLC, and authorizing myself to sign a contract for three years with an option to extend the contract for three additional one-year terms. Uh, the money is already budgeted, uh, the proposals came in well within our budgeted amounts. If you've seen our patrol cars, they're basically like little mini fighter jets, so they're very, uh, technical, and so we need specialized companies to do this. Uh, we've, have an existing contract with Wireworks currently, they have submitted a bid that was well within the parameters and will be in the best interest of the city, so we're asking council to award that contract.
Counsel?
I would move to adopt the resolution on page thirty-four as presented, um, awarding a contract to Wireworks LLC and authorizing the Chief of Police to enter into a contract with Wireworks for police vehicle lease purchase, outfit vehicles, and maintain equipment.
Second.
Seconded.
We have motion in a second, thank you, Counselor Novak. Have those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Hearing no, no opposition, motion passes, chief?
Thank you, have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Um, next is adoption of the consent calendar, counsel?
Move we approve adoption of this consent calendar as written.
Second.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? I got you, Counselor Johnson.
Okay, thank you.
I saw, I heard, I saw your mouth move.
Yeah, I was like, my mouth wasn't going fast enough.
Become a lip reader on Zoom. Um, next on the agenda, we moved item ten to item six, so next on the agenda is the business from the council, uh, I'm gonna go this way this time, so let me start with Counselor Novak.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you, counselor, Counselor Johnson?
Um, nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counselor Bartholomew?
Um, yes, I just want to recognize a member of our city, a citizen who has recently passed, um, her name Sharon Geesler, um, last week, um, uh, passed away after, uh, a procedure, a medical procedure, and, um, was not, that was an unexpected event, um, she was a, a significant member of our city.
Yes.
And, um, she did quite a bit of, she's, she made a huge contribution in, in terms of, um, was part of doing, bringing a lot of things to Albany, uh, YMCA, uh, Albany Habitat for Humanity, of which I now am able to have a job that is very meaningful. Um, she was always constantly advocating, um, for the citizens, especially the persons in this city who are unhoused or, um, special needs, and I just wanted to recognize her many years of service, she was, um, eighty-four, and, um, she had contributed to Albany for over sixty years, and so I just wanted to recognize her tonight.
Wilson?
Uh, yes, it's, uh, nice to be back in the council chamber. Um, I see we're back to having a single podium rather than a, a table here where we can have duets or trios, and, um, I, I see the podium is a little tall for some people, and, um, well, I have, uh, I have agreement in the council chamber here, that's wonderful. Um, maybe we could take the casters off, perhaps, uh, maybe some other way to shorten it, uh, but, uh, did we have to do away with the, um, table that had a, a chance for two or three people to talk at one time?
We're sitting at it.
You're rich?
We are sitting at that table right now.
That's the table, isn't it?
Yeah, now, now
Maybe we need another one of those.
I would let you know, though, that there are plans to create a table for
Oh, great, and I also miss a, uh, a drawer, a drawer here. Oh, this is It's kind of, kind of a minor drawer compared to what we had in the past, I, I like the old style better, I think. Anyway, it's good to be back, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Counselor Smith?
Uh, to add to what, uh, Counselor Bartholomew said, uh, I wanted to remind people that Sharon was one of the first recipients of the Human Relations Award way back when, and, um, was a, a driving force in establishing the ordinance that created the Human Relations Commission, and a frequent guest at, at council meetings, holding us to task for, to do, do better things, so, um, I, thank you for mentioning that.
Uh, just one co-comment, tomorrow is actually the open house for the new Riverfront Center, uh, hopefully folks can come down and, uh, attend that sometime during the day, if you come after eleven o'clock, you can come in and have some fun at the Carousel also, hope to see you there tomorrow.
And all I have tonight is, I did pay my respects, I was able to make it over and pay my respects to Sharon, uh, she was very kind to me, uh, from the time I was, you know, getting involved with the city, and she was always this breath of fresh air, and she had a smile, and when I could see her smile, um, and it was, it was sad to hear that she had passed, and I spoke with her daughter, um, outside the funeral home, and I went in, she allowed me to say, make her pay my respects and say goodbye, but she was always a kind spirit to me, really appreciated her for that. Um, I do wanna say that I'm extremely excited that, uh, If I Were the Mayor Contest yielded fifty-nine posters from our fourth and fifth graders, from the middle of the schools that we attended, and Matthew, thank you very much for the hard work that you did, Matt, that you had done for that project, um, I think we saw eleven or twelve essays from the sixth and seventh and eighth graders, but what was disappointing to me was that not one high school student turned in anything for the contest, and so that's my fault, I'll do a better job next time, and, um, and, uh, I'm excited that, uh, the process will be evaluating those posters, um, on Friday morning, so they'll be here somewhere in council, I think Matt's gonna set it up, but the winner of the fourth grade, the, the sixth or middle school contest, will be receiving a hundred-and-fifty-dollar prize of my, my money, and, and the fifth grader will receive, winner will receive a hundred dollars from me as for participating in the contest, and I think I'm really excited to look at some of these posters, if you, like you have a moment, once Matt gets them set up, come and take a look at them and enjoy them like we will. Um, other than that, I'm gonna turn it over to the city manager for his report, and we'll
Thanks, thanks, Mayor, I'll be short, because both you and Counselor Kupcinski stole some of my thunder, I was gonna recognize Matt for the, uh, If I Were Mayor concert contest, and actually ask him to come out and, uh, tell you about the results, but you've, you've, you've done that.
I, I still wanna hear from him, Matt, come on out.
Unless you can speak from behind there.
Where's he at?
He's in the
Matt? Don't hide.
He's got
He wore a tie today, you gotta see this, come on out, Matt. That's okay, we still love you.
It's a little droopy, sad mic. So, ooh, I don't, you know, um, so, yeah, uh, as the mayor said, um, we were, uh, pretty fortunate in our first local version of the If I Were Mayor Contest, to receive about forty, or fifty-nine, fifty-six, I can't remember, uh, entries from the fourth and fifth graders, which represented nine of the Albany elementary schools, and, uh, I think one home score, and then, uh, about eleven of the Albany elementary schools and, I think, one homeschooler, and then about 11 essays from the middle school group, which included all three public Albany middle schools, as well as one from Albany Christian School, and a homeschooler as well. And I think not only has it been a positive thing for us, and we're looking forward to engaging not just with this contest, but regularly with schools, we took the approach that this is an ongoing process to engage with our youth, to increase knowledge of civic involvement and their local government, and the way their local government fits within not only their own life, but also the county and the state and the federal level, and how that all plays together. I think if we can start young in that process, that not only do, do we see benefits long-term, but it also helps the city to distill down some of these really complicated concepts that we ask adults to
Right.
understand, and hopefully through this process of teaching children, we'll be able to teach adults at the same time. So
Yes.
There's still, as the mayor said, a number of parents actually expressed an interest in displaying all the posters, so we're working on a way to do that. And, you're also, he stole all my thunder. We're working on a lunch with the mayor event, probably here in City Hall. We'll get some pizzas and just kind of sit and chat. We had that experience with the high schoolers, with the leadership classes, which you hinted at. I'm a little disappointed that we didn't connect, but we didn't get that chance with all of these entrants. And so kind of repeating that same process with them during that, that lunch with the mayor.
And, and what I want to commend you for was, you know, Matthew, Matt really helped solidify some of the messages I was bringing out in that we want to hear from you. And a lot of these young folks, this is their first time they're going to vote, and, you know, finding what websites to go to. One young man asked me, but where can I find the agenda? It was great to show him. Matt told him where to go. He actually texted me or emailed me and said, I found the agenda. Thank you very much. Tell Matt I said I appreciate it. So these young people are actually having discussions, the two fifth graders at North Albany Elementary, were talking about parks. We need more parks. No, we don't need more parks, we need more houses. And these are two fifth grade young ladies talking about what we need as a city. And it was wonderful to have those conversations. So, but thank you very much for shadowing me or running or making sure I got to the right place.
Keeping you in line, as you would say.
Keeps me in line. He actually said that, and he was keeping me in line. But it was, it was one of the things that the kids, you know, said, I would like to know who my city councilor is. And so I think that's really cool, that they want to know who their city councilors. And some of them, like your daughter, watch the meetings with you. And more and more young people are watching us. COVID has shown them, they're looking at us. And I think that's wonderful, because they're bringing ideas and they're saying, hey, I would like to have a cup of coffee with you, with my dad, and find out what's going on with X. So I think that we're, the outreach has been helpful, and I think COVID has taught all of us, and especially young people, that needed, they need to pay attention. So, but thank you, Matt, for your work.
Yep.
I'm looking forward to scoring a little contest with you.
Thanks.
The city manager, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to...
I have a question about their watching city council.
Yes, they're watching city.
But can they recognize us? I see the city council.
Oh, no, it's on, it's on Facebook.
And cases actually show up where you recognize them?
Okay, thank, thank you, Mayor. And just to, just to close the loop on a couple of things for, on Monday night, council had asked for a chance to consider fluoridation. That's on your calendar for April 27th. Another thing, there's been a flurry of activity or interest in trees and our urban forestry program, so I, I would alert you to an email I sent you earlier today. And then lastly, Council Olson, if you want, we can build a little stepping stool down here in front of the podium, so people can step up to that. We'll have, we'll have that ready at some point. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Peter. I will then, next meeting for us is going to be Monday, April 11th, 2022 at 4:00 PM for a work session. And then Wednesday, April 13th, at 2022 at 6:00 PM, or 1800 for your military types. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for being here this evening and joining the discussion.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Good night.